Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council. I want to take a moment just to thank everyone. It's good to see so many faces in the, I'm going to go ahead and call this a chamber this evening, so we appreciate you coming out. We have a full agenda this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and just jump right on into it. First agenda item this evening will be consideration of council minutes, so a meeting held on March 8th, 2021. Thank you. All right, I have a first and a second. Council, the motion is to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes presented to you in your packets? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion so carries. Have anybody signed up for public comment this evening?
Not other than the credits.
Okay, fantastic. No public comment this evening. Next agenda item, Forest Street Council update, Arbor Day celebration. We would like to welcome Kenny Baker to the podium, Chair of the Council. Welcome Kenny.
Thank you. Is it okay to take yourself, please?
Absolutely.
I gotta read this proclamation, it'd be hard to read with that on. Good evening, Mr. Recorder, City Council. I come here this evening to give a report of the activities of the Somersville Forest Street Council for the past year. 2020 for us was like most places in the country, I guess. It was pretty much a washout, nothing much happened because of the, of course, COVID and everything. I did do some maintenance, some mulching of trees, basically within the city limits, down around City Hall and out of Brown Oaks, I did some mulching and maintenance work on trees out there. But other than that, not much. But I do have a lot of unexpended money in my budget, which expires June 30th of this year, and I've got some projects online. We are going to do a privacy type, I wouldn't call it a fence, but a hedge out at Brown Oaks. We're going to plant about 18 Arbor Vita trees. Those are the pines that grow real tall and slender. We're going to plant them on the backside over near that new exit that they put in out there. And then, and again, I want to do some mulching and have under contract the removal of some trees around the 500,000 gallon water tank up on Dominic Circle. Some of those trees up there had grown up and were touching the tank, just need it taken out, so I've already got that under contract and those will be taken out. Just got a notice, an email last week, we got awarded, the City of Somersville got awarded a Tree City USA Award for 2020, and I think we've got that award every year since Mr. Williams, my predecessor, started that. I think back in around, where's Amy, 2010 or 2012? But every year we did all the requirements and have been awarded that Tree City USA Award. So I'm real proud of that. The next thing I got coming up, of course, is Arbor Day, and it is scheduled this year in West Virginia for April the 30th. And we work with the local grade school, Somersville Grade School, with the fifth grade class, and they're going to do some posters for us, and some of the, myself and our council members will judge those, and we award a first, second, third place prize for those posters that they make, $50 for third, $75 and $100 for first. That is at 9:30 a.m., like I say, over at Somersville Grade School, and we're going to plant that morning at 9:30, two trees. And I got contacted by Malanga Hill Power up in Clarksville. They are a tree city utility, and so they contacted me a few weeks ago and said they would like to partner with us, and they are doing that so they can keep their tree utility status, because there's certain hoops and things that they have to do to keep that, just like we as a Tree City USA have to do. But anyway, they're going to contribute up to $300 for the purchase of these two trees, and of course, if they're more than that, it'll, we'll pick it up out of our budget. If any council would like to attend that, you're welcome to come. Again, that's 9:30 a.m. on April 30th, that's a Friday, I think. Next thing I want to have is to read this proclamation, normally the mayor would read it, since he's not here, I'll read it. Says, "Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees can produce, can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Robert L. Schaefer, Mayor of the City of Somersville, does hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the City of Somersville. And the mayor urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And the mayor also urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed this day, March 22nd, 2021." Mayor Somersville. I'll submit this for the mayor to sign. I think you had a copy of it on the table. And that's all I have, Council. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'd like to make one comment. Kenny, I think you and your council are doing a superior job, and it's so, I'm so thankful to hear that we're going to be able to pull this off this year, and you're going to be able to do it with the Somersville Elementary Kids, and I know they always look forward to it. I have grandchildren who participate in that, and it's a big deal, and they get a whole lot out of it, so I want to say thank you.
Yeah, and it is going to be held outdoors, no indoor, and it will comply with COVID regulations, whatever they may be at that time, but I believe we are going to have it this year.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, Kenny.
Great presentation there. Next item on the agenda will be the 2021-2022 City Council Grant Presentations. We have six presenting this evening, we will have seven presenting at the next meeting. So we're going to go ahead and start with the sixth this evening. I'm going to allow five minutes on the presentation, and the first presenters will be with the Legacy People's Place Incorporated. And feel free, there's some wipes up there, if anyone wishes to wipe off a mic or wipe off a stand, we have that up there.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Donna Griffith, and I represent Legacy People's Place, it's a community building in Nicholas County. And I don't know how many of you have been there, we have, we have a rent dinner in the spring, and that kind of carries us through to the next year, paying our utility bills and repairs and everything, you know, that we have to do. Well, of course, we weren't allowed, we weren't able to do that this past year. And we have had monthly, like, we have monthly meals, you know, for anyone to come in and have a free meal, like soup kitchen, and we were, we were doing that up until the COVID came about, and when COVID appeared, we didn't do that anymore, but we have weekly meals, and we have like what we call grab and go, and we do probably, I don't know, 150 to 200 meals a week, and of course, it's free, and they're all, you know, good home-cooked meals. And that, you know, it's like I say, it's free, but we do get donations, and we have been getting some donations from people that we have never even heard tell of before, and that helps us pay our bills, because where we weren't able, you know, to have the rent dinner, this has helped us a lot. And what we were asking for, we, we make a lot of homemade rolls and cakes and mashed potatoes and things that we need to use, need to use a mixer for. Well, I'm the roll maker and pretty much the chief cook, I guess, and I've gotten born up two kitchen aids, which one of them was mine, one of them's People's Place, my husband's worked on them, but anyway, we're hoping to get a grant to where we can get a commercial mixer, and also a commercial can opener, and that's about all I have to say. If anyone has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I have a question. Very serious question, are you going to do the?
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
Are you going to do the ramp dinner this year?
We hope to. We, we don't have really any plans yet, other than we hope to have it the first day of May, and hope it's warm enough that people can get outside, and, because we don't know that they'll be able, you know, to come inside and eat, but we do plan on having it, we've set the date, but that's pretty much, we've contacted someone to, we pay $25 a bushel, we use anywhere from $85 to $100 bushel for our ramp dinner.
It's always very good.
And so that line is a big expense, just the ramps, don't count, you know, our hams and bacon, and we have, we have big meals, big plates, big servings, so I hope anyone that's interested in ramps will come out and join us. Any other questions?
Have you priced the mixer and the?
Excuse me?
Can opener? Have you priced it, the mixer and the?
Ah.
Can opener, have you?
Well, we did, I think the mixer that we had picked out maybe was like $4.88 or something, I'm not sure, and of course, the can opener was just, it was maybe less than 200, I'm not sure. It wasn't very expensive.
So approximately $700?
Probably.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
What's your telephone number, please?
Excuse me?
What's your phone number, may I have it? Your phone number?
My phone number, 304-846-9147.
Thank you. You need a good Hobart mixer.
Do what?
You need a commercial grid Hobart mixer.
Yes.
That's what you need.
Yeah, we got a, we got a commercial Hobart dishwasher that we purchased, got it with this here a year ago, and we got a used commercial dishwasher, a guy from Virginia sold it to us, wrote him a check for $1,200, and it's still sitting in one of our spare rooms that we don't use. The pump that led the detergent into, to wish the dishes was bad, it didn't even have the racks with it, and here we're stuck with it. So I don't even know, it's just junk to us, really, you know, we would like to be able to do something with it, or get a little bit of money on it, but that's how it is.
Any other questions for Donna? Donna, thank you, great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Next up will be Nicholas County 4-H Youth Foundation.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having us here. I am hoping to do a project called 4-H Banners, 4-H Street Pole Banners, and basically what that entails, the street pole banners that are located on Broad Street and the City of Somersville, as well as North Side Drive, out on 19th, of getting banners that are specifically for 4-H. They will be, we, because of some of our branding that we're required to do through WDU and 4-H, we do have to have banners that are branded and that are professionally printed with that brand, because of all of that litigation and everything, having to have branding printed by specific people. So the project is looking at that we're going to have bookends, that the last one or two on each side of the street are going to be those printed branded banners for 4-H, and then all of the banners on the inside from there are going to be banners that the 4-H youth are going to create. So they're going to be, I'm working with Mrs. Halsted, who makes the banners for downtown Somersville, she's agreed to work with us, work with the 4-Hers to be able to sew and make those banners. There was some discussion about she doesn't do the banners on North Side Drive, so potentially having those banners being painted by the youth, of getting the fabric and having the kid to be able to paint those, which opens up a whole new creativity for those youth, because we're locked in with what we're sewing, the shapes that we can do and being able to be visible for motorists and things like that. So we have that, those potential for the 4-Hers to not only sew banners and learn from Mrs. Halsted about that, but also to be able to paint and create banners. These banners will be on display from the first week, well, from the last week in September, and then our National 4-H Week always occurs the first full week in October, that also coincides, 1st of October is when we start our new 4-H year, so it's a great time to be able to promote 4-H, encourage kids to sign up with 4-H and participate in 4-H. So we're looking at that week before our National 4-H Week, and then the week of National 4-H Week, that these banners would be on display in Somersville, to be able, like I said, to promote 4-H and for kids to be able to participate in this. Because of the nature of the banners and the wear and the tear that they're going to receive, even though it's only that two-week timeframe, this is being looked at as going to be a perpetual thing, that every year the youth are going to be able to prepare, repair, or create new banners. And of course, they're double-sided, so we would have to talk to the youth if we want to try and do the same thing on both sides, or if we want to have two different things on the different sides, so that opens up to even more youth participating and being able to create these. So this will give them a sense of citizenship, creativity, as well as community service, and give them something that they can be proud of and want to come to the town to show off, that's my banner, I made that. And so, so it's still in the works of how we're going to do some of the things. Mrs. Halsted, she's having some difficulty getting the fabric right now to be able to make the banners, so again, we're looking at, if we can't get the fabric to be able to sew, we can transition this over to they can paint their design on the fabric, and if it only lasts one season, that's perfectly fine, because 4-Hers can then make new ones the next season. And then every season, the 4-Hers can have that creativity of promoting 4-H, showing their pride in 4-H and their participation. Do I have any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Could you give us your name and also the amount of your request?
Yes, sorry, I apologize for that. My name is Amy Walker, I'm the new 4-H agent for Nicholas County, and I'm requesting $3,000. That will cover having, we're looking at two professionally printed banner designs, so that will cover two of those designs, five banners each, for, so a total of 30 for downtown and for North Side, so that way those can, even though those are professionally printed and they'll last longer, we'll still have that stock that we can replace with, so we don't have to keep coming back once they wear out. So some of that money is towards that, and the rest of that money is to buy the supplies, so either the fabric, the paint, the paintbrushes, downtown on Broad Street, because of the way that the banners are constructed to be able to go onto the poles, dowels are used as a weight at the bottom, so that's for those supplies as well. Any other questions? And thank you very much, and I will leave these on the chair, if you'd like, these are just some of our branded stickers for 4-H and extension service.
Thank you. Nice presentation. Next up, Nicholas County Community Foundation.
Mr. Recorder, Council, thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Jay Burrell, I'm the President Nicholas County Community Foundation, and after this past year, I'm happy to report the foundation's strong, very strong. We were able to recruit roughly eight new fund holders this year, people that are anxious to support the cause of the foundation, and I'm probably stealing some of Tamara's thunder that to put back in Nicholas County. So we're anxious to do that, and I'm happy to report that I think we're going to see our largest year ever supporting Nicholas County this year, and that's because of grants like the one we're applying for today. That's what enables to do that, enables us to do that. I'd like to introduce Tamara, our Executive Director, and she's going to present the grant request.
Hello, thank you. My name's Tamara Mullins, Executive Director for Nicholas County Community Foundation. We are asking for $5,000 for operating costs. People come to the NCCF for two main reasons, to help their community and to leave their legacy. In turn, we provide grants and scholarships to Somersville and all of Nicholas County. We are stewards of what we call forever funds. We call them forever funds because they are meant to last forever, providing support for whatever the fund holder desires while celebrating and honoring those named in the fund. To that end, every year since 2009, when the foundation became a full-fledged community foundation, we have done just that, providing year after year of funding to support programming for those in our community in Somersville who need it the most. To date, we have given over $1.4 million to Nicholas County, one project you can see under your feet today in the new carpeting for the Somersville CBB. This past year, although one full of trials and tribulations, we saw our collective fund crest the $5 million mark. This is monumental for a young foundation in a small community. What you may not know is the structure of our foundation. In order for our funds to remain forever funds, we spend only a percentage of the interest that is made, never dipping into the principal. This will ensure that the support is provided to Somersville and Nicholas County forever. We charge an annual fee which provides our operating funds. Other funds for operations are only provided from grants that we apply for, like the grants that you guys have so graciously provided us in the past. While we are working hard to get to our goal of full autonomy, we are not there yet. We continue to need a little support with operations. By providing your support, you are also helping us to continue our foundation and to give support to our community forever. Thank you for consideration of our grant application. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tamara, Jay.
Thank you, Recorder.
Appreciate it.
Mullins.
Mullins.
And I don't know.
Next up, Nicholas County Shop with a First Responder.
Well, I'm Steve Murphy, representing the Nicholas County Shop with a First Responder. I know we was here last year, and I appreciate your donation. If somebody wasn't here last year, a quick explanation of the program, we raise money, we get underprivileged kids in the county and take them shopping at Walmart, we feed them dinner prior to, have them on Santa Claus, we wasn't able to do that this year because of the COVID, but that's our typical procedure, and then each kid gets $100 tax-free. They get a shop with either a EMS, firefighter, or law enforcement. Uniform member actually walks them around Walmart, helps them pick out what they want, and then takes them to the cash register room and sees them out of the store. The program's growing very fast. This, last year was our fourth year. Our first year, we had 30 kids, last year we invited 173 and actually took 155. So obviously, our need for donations is going up along with that, it's, I think last year we spent just a little short of $16,000 on that point. You know, one reason the program's very important is obviously, a lot of these kids want to get a Christmas at all without the donations of businesses, citizens, and people like yourselves. Some of them sadly don't seem to have dinner to eat, and it may be the best meal they've had for a while. A second important part, especially for me, being in law enforcement today's times, this allows us to give a great image out to the kids of law enforcement, along with the whole entire community, but especially the kids, unfortunately, a lot of these kids come from troubled homes where they've seen dad, maybe mom arrested, and they have a very negative opinion of us. So this is our opportunity to, to show the kids that we're doing good things and, you know, give a different image. I don't have a whole lot, I don't have a five-minute speech here, that's just kind of the end of it, and we would appreciate your donation again this year to help make that program possible.
What's the amount of your donation?
How short again were you last year? $16,000? Is that what you said?
That's, we spent about $16,000.
$16,000 is what you spent.
We invited 173 and 155, so. And we're working every year on trying to make it bigger and bigger.
Who's that, we? Who law is?
So we've got a representative on the board from law enforcement, EMS, and fire, so everybody, you know, from every representative has a vote. There's like Chief Noahak is on our board, myself, Noah Allen, who represents Wilderness Volunteer Fire Department, along with Wilderness Ambulance Service, and we have somebody from Jan Care, so we've tried to reach out. All of those that I just named participate, along with numerous fire departments, volunteer fire departments from all over the county show up. And something else, we, we take kids from every part of the county, there's an application they have to fill out, we take kids from 4 to 16 years old, and we have minimal standards, or maximum standards, I'm sorry, of income to be able to accept these kids, and we try to filter through them to make sure we're getting kids who really need it. So far, every year we've been at the, at the virgins, having to turn kids away, but we have made it every year to take every kid that applied and met our qualification Any other questions?
So you had about 20-some kids that didn't show up?
Yes, sir, we invited.
You had 20-some kids that could not get there for $100 a piece, that wouldn't help a kid there?
They just didn't show up, sir, because we actually make arrangements, if there's one that doesn't have transportation, we have virgins to go pick them up and bring them. So we don't want them missing out because they may not have a car.
And then you just left their money in the hopper for the next year?
Yes. Yes, we had, I apologize, especially somebody here with me tonight with these numbers, and he kind of ditched me last night, but I think we have about 1,500 to 2,000 left over this year, which is the most we've had in a year. Usually we're down to less than 200 bucks left over from year to year, so.
Any other questions? That's good work.
Thanks.
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Next up, Nicholas County Veterans Memorial Park.
Good evening, my name's James Atkins. I'd like to start off saying thank you to the mayor and the council members of the City of Somersville for having me out here to speak tonight. I wanted to talk to you about some park enhancements that we would like to do if we received this funding. There's a lot of buildings on the park, for instance, cabins, dining hall, none of them have any gutters on them, and you can walk behind these buildings and actually see where the water runoff from the top of the building is actually causing foundation degradation. So, you know, we're, part of the reason we're applying for this grant is so we could take care of that issue and potentially save thousands, maybe even tenths of thousands of dollars in the future. We're also asking for the grant in order to rent a backhoe, so we could dig out a ditch behind the pine lodge area. There's a lot of, if you, if you've ever driven through the park, say, going down the poolside, and then you go around the curve to go around the stadium, if you look off to your right there, there's, you can see kind of a ditch over there, but it could be done a lot better. Right now, all the water runoff is going into this ditch and oversaturating the ground there behind that area, you know, and if we were able to get this grant that'll allow us to dig that ditch out properly and actually have more usable ground for all of the patrons and children, anybody who wants to use that area for play or what, what have you. It would also help us, uh, move a few piles of dirt that we have laying around the, uh, the park. Uh, we have one behind the dining hall and one behind the softball field and the girl's softball field over there. And, um, we'll use that dirt to actually fill in a lot, you know, there's a few holes of ground on the park that could actually be filled in with this dirt. Certain places on like, say, the softball fields, uh, so that way kids won't end up tripping, getting hurt while they're out there playing sports, what have you. Also, we use that backhoe to go behind one of the cabins, the last cabin on your left if you're driving through the park. From where the park, the rest of the park is up on a higher level, all that water runs down behind to where that cabin is and pulls up right there behind the cabin, you know? So that backhoe would also help us dig a, a ditch something there so we could keep that water from pulling up and possibly causing more damage to the foundation of the cabin. This grant would also allow us to, uh, purchase hangers for the guttering for all the said buildings mentioned, uh, so that way, you know, we already have the gutter that we can put on these buildings, except for the dining hall, but the rest of the buildings we have guttering that we can put up there. We just need the hangers. For the dining hall, we actually have, uh, we're going to, we'd use some of that, that money to go towards a seamless gutter as well to put on the back of the dining hall. And, uh, actually, we'd actually have somebody come in to install that seamless gutter as well. Um, but the rest of the work will be performed by all park employees, so. Yeah, that, that actually, that would also help with, uh, keeping the water from flowing over and pouring into the AC units behind the dining hall as well. And we all know that those can be pretty expensive to replace those central air heaters. And the price that, the amount we're asking for is $3,100 and that should be suffice to cover all, everything that's in our grant application. Uh, do I have any questions?
Are you on Park Board, you-
I'm the Park Manager.
Park Manager.
Yes, sir.
Well.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Next up, WVU Nicholas County Extension Service.
Well, good eve- good evening, everyone. And I am Brian Sparks with, uh, West Virginia University Extension Service here in Nicholas County and also I work Fayette County. And I come to you tonight for a, for a long program that we've offered to all the third graders in Nicholas County and that is a, um, we call it the Farm Safety Day. And it's, it's a day that we teach those youths, uh, a little bit about farm safety, but we teach them about lawnmower safety, sun safety, uh, tractor and PTO safety, uh, food safety, first aid, and, um, also, um, fire safety. And that's what I come to you tonight. We try to purchase every one of those youth in that certain grade, uh, smoke detectors. And we teach the kids, uh, how to put them up, um, where to put them up, how to check the batteries and get their parents to talk their parents into installing those at home. And, uh, unfortunately, last year was the first year that we hadn't offered that program in over 20 years because of the circumstance we were in. And so this is a partnership not only between us, West Virginia University Extension Service, but the Progressive Farm Safety Day Group, um, the Nicholas County Farm Bureau, of course, the Nicholas County Board of Education is a big partner in this. And you all in the past have always been a big partner in helping fund this feature. So coming to you tonight, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact figure. It's $3,200. And, uh, what we do is we just go down to, uh, the local supplier, uh, Lowe's and work with them to give us a discount rate to buy enough smoke detectors for those kids for that grade for this year. It's a great program and a lot of partners.
You say 3,200?
3,200, yeah. So we're looking at roughly 250 or 275 kids in that, uh, third grade. So, uh, and if it's, if it's less, that's, that's what it is. The, the mayor's been very good to work with me on, uh, just purchasing what we need and the rest of the funding goes back into the kitty. That's all I have. Anyone have any questions?
Great job, Brian. Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. One last thing I did bring is some garden calendars. And, and I hate to admit this, is I just grabbed a handful and didn't count them on the way out, and I only, I only picked up seven. So I have seven WVU garden calendars, but I have more outside my office door there on Main Street if you want to swing by and pick one up. But they're great because every day they, uh, they tell you what you can do in your yard or garden as far as planting or, or pruning or whatever you want. And then every month there's a, there's an article. So the university distributes 90,000 of these and so we, uh, we like these as a tool. So I'll leave them here on the corner.
Do you show, come up and show us how to do it?
Yeah, I sure can.
Brian, speaking of, uh, which just doesn't have anything to do with this project, uh, last year when I broke up, canceled the potato festival thing, are you all going to consider doing a potato project again like you did last year?
Um, yes, sir.
That was a, that was a great thing.
Yeah, it was.
It really was. That was a, I mean, I've got a nine-year-old that's determined she's planting potatoes this year because of, because of that last year. I mean, I know it got canceled for, I think, I think a lot of people would join in on that.
Yeah, so our hopes were, uh, to get more youth involved in, in agriculture and so the, um, the Lions Club, right? Rotary, Rotary donated us some money to buy the kids potatoes and fertilizer, but 20 kids show up to do this little project. And so our new 4-H agent, as you all met earlier, Amy Walker, has great, um, ideas to go forward with this. And Amy, I think we're going to try to do that potato project, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I asked Southern States to set us back, um, 150-pound potatoes because potatoes are, are scarce this year, seed potatoes. And so we hope to continue to offer that to a few youth. And the hope was we would have this, um, participation that we could carry right on over to the potato festival. So, yeah, Brandon, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, that was a good thing.
Thank you.
Brian, can I have your phone number?
Uh, 304-619-9697. That's my cell.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the grant presentations. On the next agenda item, approval of the Senior Citizen Feeding Program through the month of April.
I think we'll approve. Second.
Fantastic. I have a first and a second. Discussion?
What's the price we cost for that?
We had, uh, the last time we had a three-month, um, he presented three months and it was at $24,000. I had, no, $24,000 for the three months. I asked today if it was trending about $8,000 a month and they said yes. So we're right at $8,000. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion so carries. All the recorders report, uh, I have a short one this evening. Just want to talk about the comprehensive plan and some of the work that we did, uh, in our last meeting with planning and zoning went very, very well. We had a lot of talk and discussion about, um, parks and recreation, uh, even received some calls after the meeting with some questions, so it was well received. And we, we had several online on Zoom following that, that evening. So I appreciate the, uh, participation and I know several of the council members were also, you know, online participating and I do appreciate that. I do want to announce on April 5th, that will be our next meeting. We actually will be step, skipping a Monday night, uh, next Monday, since we had a five-week, uh, month. And we will be attending April 5th at 6 o'clock. It will be discussing one element and that'll be housing. So I encourage everybody to join in again with the Zoom and, uh, I think you'll find it enjoyable. The housing is a, is an interesting element and, uh, certainly, uh, we will have a lot to discuss in that, in that element. On the mayor's report, um, I do want to discuss and I will read off this. It is annual spring cleanup time again. Uh, we're very exciting times here. Uh, that is always a big time. The City of Somersville Annual Spring Cleanup is as follows. Wards one and two, April 5th through the 9th. Wards three and four, April 12th through the 16th. Please get your items out as early in the week as possible. Call City Hall at 304-872-1211 to request your pickup. What is allowable? Furniture, appliances, and other large items. Appliances containing Freon must have a certification sticker that the Freon has been removed. Unallowable? Regular garbage, leaves, brush, tires, construction debris. This service is only for the citizens that live within the, the corporate limits of Somersville. It is illegal for anyone outside city limits to bring items into the city for pickup. If you are unsure of your ward, just please call City Hall and they will be happy to assist you with that. Also, I do want to invite everybody, uh, there is a BCA meeting that'll be held on March 25th. This meeting will also be held on Zoom for those who want to participate. If you need that Zoom meeting, I believe Amy sent that to all the council members via email, but if there's anybody out there, uh, please just give the City Hall a call and they'll be glad to give you that, that, uh, that address that you need for, to attend a Zoom meeting. Any questions on any of that? Any council reporters? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, move.
Thank you. A first and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Have a good evening.